You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay. We'll open up the Board of Finance for the town of Branford, special work session and budget meeting for Monday, March 29, 2021. And first on the agenda, to consider and if appropriate approve various transfers and resolutions from the finance director. And we're in receipt of a letter from Jim which goes over several recommended transfers to close out some projects and to reallocate unexpended or unneeded funds that then we have considered in conjunction with the proposed budget. So these are transfers that will impact what we will be recommending at the next agenda item with regards to the budget. I will read, first I'll let Jim go over these amounts, and then there's two resolutions which will actually essentially increase the budget in order to accommodate recommended expenditures. Jim?
Thank you, Joe. So essentially, it's many pages, but if I can kind of summarize the process and what we're trying to accomplish here is, as many of us are aware, the town has a number of capital funds and a number of projects. And typically, at this time of year, we've looked at those and we made some, closed some out, we did some transfers. It's something that, that subject is currently something which the RTM is also looking at. I've had some discussions last week with a member of the Rules and Ordinance Committee about, you know, do we sunset these, do we come up with a policy, but, you know, that's still in its infancy. But what you have here tonight is really a couple different categories. The first category gives me is to close out items to support requests. So those are dollars that are coming from various funds that are going to get re-appropriated. The other relates to looking at the police department headquarters building and essentially taking a series of smaller appropriations that were allocated to the police department, and you're familiar with a lot of them, roofs, cell blocks. Also included in that is the volunteer service center. They're all part of what you might call the same campus. And to sort of look at that in a more comprehensive fashion so that down the road, that might actually be its own project. And so there's a new project in the current year also, which would then essentially look at the police department and come up with a sort of a comprehensive approach and that they would also allow us...
Siri thinks I'm talking to her for some reason. I'm not sure what I said, but... Anyway, so what I was saying is, so it would be more of a comprehensive approach. And once those things are identified, you know, we could do one appropriation and we could bang out a whole list of projects rather than doing it incrementally. We could do it under the auspices of a contractor or a construction manager. So the second, or third part of this whole process is, well, then what do you do with those, with those funds? And one of the proposals is to use those dollars and reallocate those to the police pension fund. And so staying consistent within function, police department headquarters to the police pension. And some of you may be asking, well, what happens if down the road, we need that other appropriation? And, you know, there's a couple of different ways we would actually fund that. If history is any guide, is, you know, you need to pay cash for it, like we did with the Indian Neck Firehouse. Possibly, there may be a grant for it. And the reason I just say possibly is because, you know, regardless of one's political affiliations, I think it's fair to say that big dollars are flowing out of Washington in this current environment. And Congress is still in the midst of developing an infrastructure program. So potentially, there could be dollars there. And then another option would be to borrow the funds, which the town has done for these type of projects. We typically enjoy a good interest rate environment. And in any environment, we'd always be at the lower end of whatever the market was because of our bond rating. And even if we were to go down the debt road, those costs should be lower than what you would expect the return to be in the pension fund, which is our return on asset assumption is 6%. Our funded ratio in the pension fund, we anticipate when the audit comes out, will be about 68%. These other dollars will push that to 69%, getting us closer to 70, which is where we typically like to be. But you may recall, we lowered our return on asset assumptions over the last five or six years. So there's a lot to unpack here, but essentially, those are the major themes that are at play here. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jim. So as Jim mentioned, there's quite a few items here, so I'll walk through them. And if we have any questions, we can discuss them. So the first section is to close out support items in the requested budgets. So with regards to Fund 720, the municipal facilities fund, we would transfer $8,300 from police lighting upgrades and $5,670 from Branford Hills demolition for a subtotal of $13,970. Those would both be transferred out to the general fund for a total of $13,970. So essentially, they'll come in as revenue corrections, yes. And Fund 700, which is the capital fund, there's several transfers totaling $173,513. And that includes the police front walkway for $8,314, UST compliance. Remind me what that is again?
Underground storage.
Okay, the underground storage tanks, two of those for $50,000 each. Consulting is $8250. Adult daycare architectural services for $500.
Branford Early Learning Center.
Yes, BELC, the Branford Early Learning Center, boiler replacement of $5837. Town hall counter replacement of $112. Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library walkway repairs for $490. Regional Energy Task Force for $10. A counseling center water mitigation for $50,000. That totals $173,513. That as well would go to the general fund. The next is the Fund 730, which is Infrastructure Enhancement Fund. Starting Creek dredging, we moved $422 out of there and put it into the general fund. And then within the general fund, what we would do is to transfer from contingency, $32,895, into communications for that phone VoIP, and that's for police?
That's...
Who's that for?
That's townwide.
That's townwide. $8895, $8,895, and technology acquisitions, primarily police department tablets for $24,000 for that $32,895. So now we're starting to, in this case, those are the recommended expenditures. You would also show the money coming into the general fund, that $173,000, the $13,970, and the $422 for $197. I'm sorry, for $187,905. That now would be, we would recommend that that get retransferred, repurposed, let's say, transferred out to the capital fund for Board of Ed cafeteria for $120,000. And that's the servary that was requested in this current, in the 2122 budget. We would also recommend $40,300 be moved out to the open space capital fund, and that would fund the improvements and barriers that the open space was requesting. We would also recommend $6,500 for, to move, get moved out to the capital fund, which would pay for police department veneer, EFS repairs. And again, we would recommend the $21,105, which would be for the phone VoIP out of the communications. So that totals $187,905. So there's a lot of moving parts, but basically, as Jim pointed out, we're cleaning up old and either unused or unneeded money to repurpose it for some requests that need to be done. Many of them are in the budget that we just had the public hearing on, that we will deal with on the next agenda item. So with that, there's a resolution that would essentially increase the budget in order to absorb the revenues, the transfers in that I referred to, and also to authorize the expenditures. So I'll read that resolution. Resolve that the Board of Finance recommended to the RTM an appropriation from increased estimated revenues resulting from the closeout of capital balances in the amount of $187,905. This transfer will increase the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget from $118,242,243 to $118,43148.
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, so next, we will look at the capital fund. And this is now on the capital side, there's a transfer in of $166,800. And on the expenditure side, within the capital fund, you have the $120,000 for the cafeteria improvements, the $40,300 for the open space repairs and improvements, and the $6,500 for the police department veneer repairs, $166,000. We would also move within the capital fund, a transfer from the police department roof replacement of $75,000, and repurpose that to Needs Assessment Police Headquarters, $75,000. There's also recommendations to, as Jim pointed out, to reduce current liabilities. And those would, that's a total of $437,582. And those are primarily police, with the exception of the first item, which is on the police campus there, is for generator replacement volunteer services of $43,000. Again, these are going to be repurposed. For now, we're moving them out of the capital fund into the general fund. So the generator replacement, $43,000, the police department generator for $17,025. The other allocation for the generator of $13,000, a allocation of $75,000 for the roof, cell block of $31,807, the roof of $75,000, and another roof allocation of $50,000, and police cell block allocation of $32,750. And the reason why these are all separate is because when others are looking at the codes here, some were appropriated in various years, beginning in 2017. So you have items coming out of the 2017 year, the 18 year, the 19 year, the 20 year, and the 21 year. That's why there's a lot of overlap with regards to the titles and the labels. Next is police roof replacement allocation of $50,000, and that happened to be in the 2020 year. And then there's a police garage roof replacement of $50,000 that was allocated in the fiscal 21 year. That totals $437,582. That would be transferred to the general fund. And from there, we would recommend that the transfer into the Fund 700 of $437,582, and we would increase, I'm sorry, that would come into the general fund to $437,582 as revenue essentially. And it would be allocated to the expenditure of, I think the label's wrong on this, of police pension contribution, $437,582. So that's what Jim had explained, that that would, that $437,000 come into the general fund, go out to the police pension fund to reduce the long-term liability and our unfunded So with all of those movements, there's another resolution required, again, to raise both sides of the budget essentially. Resolve that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation from increased estimated revenues resulting from the closeout of capital balances in the amount of $437,582. This transfer will increase the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget from $118,43148 to $118,867,730, and will be used to fund the police, fund the police pension requirements.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Robert.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jeff. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you. That takes care of the item number one. And we'll move on to the next item, which is the 2021, 2022 budget workshops, work session. And this is where we will review the budget that was presented to us over the last week, several days last week with public hearings, and then subsequent review and discussions. And we will recommend a budget to the RTM tonight. Before I get, before I move into that, just for a recap, that we had, we had a budget proposals before us of $121,552,768 for a total increase requested of $3,310,052. There was a net to be raised from taxation of $103,993,491. And we had an estimated grand list of $3,693,000. And that would have equated to a mill rate of 29.83. So that's what we had reviewed during the process. And tonight, we will vote on each budget item, each, either budget item or department, and then recommend a budget in total to the representative town meeting. As in prior years, we'll start with the Board of Ed. And what I, what I'm going to do tonight, instead of flipping through the book and every page, I'm going to use the summary page. So for those in the audience, there's, it would be, I'd be looking at the pages three through five in summary. And we'll start with the Board of Ed, which for us is on page five. And what we're recommending, they had a request of $60,287,694. And we're recommending a budget of $60,000, I'm sorry, $60,5,541, a reduction of $282,153 from their request, which would represent a 2% increase. And that reduction is to accommodate a reduced estimated requirement for health insurance to the 97% of claims. So is there discussion, or somebody like to move that?
I'll move it, Joe.
I'll second it.
They moved in second. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And we will also go to the Board of Ed capital, which they had a request of $418,000. And we are recommending $298,000, reduction of 120. And that 120 would represent the servary request that we have recommended to the RTM in the previous discussion, so that we support that initiative. We're just changing the way it's funded and suggesting that they could do that sooner than later.
I'll move that, Joe.
Then moved that by Robert.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Thank you. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So next, I will go to, back to page three and start walking through the town departments. And legislative, the request was for $18,294. We're recommending that budget.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is executive. Request is for $270,946, no change.
I'll move it.
Second.
Seconded by, by Bob. Motion by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is finance. Request is for $92,942, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved in second. Lisa, you okay with who these folks are? Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is fiscal services, $482,339. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is assessor. Request is $460,319. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Board of Tax Review. Request is $19,059. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved in seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is tax collector. Request is $562,506. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is town clerk. Request is $273,266. No, no recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is legal services, $450,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Then moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is labor relations. Request is $62,500. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Then moved and seconded by Harry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is probate court, $14,459. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is elections. $181,084. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob. Seconded by Charlie. We gotta get you in there, Charlie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Planning and zoning, $351,576. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry. Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, $9,149. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Economic development, $47,455. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie.
Seconded by Jeff.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is inland wetlands. $138,397. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is municipal government buildings. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Robert. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is cable TV. The request is $13,100. We're recommending $15,100, an increase of $2,000.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Bob.
Hey, Jeff.
Discussion? And Jeff, yeah. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
IT, investment technology, excuse me, $919,320 request, recommending 600, I'm sorry, $865,320, reduction of $54,000. Again, we're accommodating these requests in the previous recommended transfer to get work done sooner.
I'll move that.
Moved, Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Next is human resources. Request is $336,282, recommending $328,282, reduction of $8,000. We did reduce the wellness request and did not fund that.
I'll move it.
Been moved by Bob. Seconded by Charlie. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, we'll go to page four, police services. Request is $7,191,885. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Charlie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is special detail, the wash account, $525,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Department of Emergency Management. Request was $25,600. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is fire protection. Request is $6,896,741. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Been moved by Victor. Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is building inspection enforcement. Request is $199,640. No recommended changes.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff. Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is other protection, animal control. Request is $192,840. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor? Next is Public Works, $2,505,356 was the request. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is water pollution control. Transfer outs, $600,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is solid waste management and recycling. Request is $3,509,783. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is engineering. Request is $459,529. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Motion was made by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is human services. Request is for $1,068,214. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is commission on elderly. Commission for elderly. Request is $446,432. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is east shore health. $339,861. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved by Bob. Seconded by Victor. Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is recreation department. Request is $1,235,119. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is docks and recreational facilities. Request is $20,316. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is public celebration. $35,219. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Chandler, we need to go back to.
Parks and open space.
Parks and open space. You skipped over that.
We skipped that one. I was just checking, okay. Thank you. I usually skip one. Okay, Parks and, thanks Lisa. Parks and open space. Request is $26,800. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry. Seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
We did conservation commission, yes?
No.
No, we did not. Okay. Next is conservation commission. Request is $11,693. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we do the public celebration?
Yes.
Yeah, we did, okay.
$35,219. Okay, Blackstone Library. Request is for $1,598,35. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Moved by Victor. Seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Willoughby Wallace Library. The request is $250,241. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion moved and made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, page five. We have debt service. Principal of $6,940,000. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is interest. Request is $2,653,879. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is pensions and contributions. Request is $5,880,329. No recommended changes.
I'll move that.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion. All in favor? Next is employee group insurance. Request is $6,569,190. Recommended budget is, would be $6,413,190. Reduction of $156,000 from the request. Again, representing 97% of claims as similar to what we reduced on the Board of Ed side.
I'll move it, Joe.
I'll second.
Moved by Bob. Seconded by Victor. Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is municipal insurance. Request is for $2,323,902. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is contingency. Request is $924,261. No recommended changes.
I'll move it.
Moved by Jeff. Seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We will now, those take care, that takes care of the town departments. We will move to the capital projects and, what I'll do with the capital projects is run through them. I think it's individually, just so that we have a little more transparency on the projects here. So, the page 68, that's been revised, I think. So, we'll start with the revaluation. Request was for $75,000 and we would recommend $60,000.
I'll move that.
You want to move that?
Second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the senior center, you know, we've ordinarily, do I vote on each one of these? I don't think we usually vote on every single one of these.
Yeah, that's what I usually do.
So, what we'll do is we'll run through this. The subtotal here is total equipment and services. So, we'll run to that number, okay? And then we'll do the, we'll run in the building. We'll go through the categories and that way we have a resolution that'll accommodate. I think that's more efficient. So, I'll run down the fact that, so we'll hold that motion for the $60,000. But the recommended number on the revaluation is $60,000 versus the requested $75,000. We would fund, and if there's a difference, I will note it. If not, then it's what the request was. So, the senior center vehicle replacement fund of $35,000, we would fund. The fire sinking fund, request was $350,000. We would fund $325,000. Ambulance fund, the request was $125,000. We would fund $115,000. We would fund $60,000 for the radio upgrade sinking fund. We would fund $85,000 for the SCBA gear replacement sinking fund. Cardiac monitor, we'd fund at $28,000. Police cruisers, we'd fund at $180,000. And the related equipment, $105,000. The radar detection and warning device, we'd fund at $12,000. The license place reader, we'd fund at $14,025. Portable radio replacement, we'd fund at $9,132. Ballistic vest replacement fund, we'd contribute $8,200. Downtown center maintenance for $25,000. The DPW sinking fund, request was $225,000. We would allocate $200,000. Police department exterior veneer repairs for $6,000, we would not fund because we've addressed that in another way. We would fund that with other, and that's listed in the capital item under other financing. And the police department request for power washing of $17,000, we would not fund. We would also not accommodate the, I'm sorry, that was GGB. But it was for the police department, the power washing. Vehicle replacement, GGB, we would not fund. The pump station generators, which comes, does not taxation, but we would approve that $50,000. We would also, the sewer reserve fund, we would approve the $225,000. Likewise, the apparatus fund for the water treatment plant for $75,000. Rosebook stone, culvert inspections, we would fund at $50,000, the request from engineering. Vehicle replacement for recreation, we would fund at $30,000. We would recommend funding the plow and sander for recreation as well to go along with that truck. And we would recommend $35,000 for the Blackstone Library sinking fund. So, the request there was for $1,847,357. The recommended amount was $1,747,857.
I'll move those transfers.
Motion's been made by Victor. Seconded by Jeff. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and next is for building. One category here, this would be a request for future energy savings projects of $25,000, recommending that be allocated.
I'll move it.
Moved by Victor.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the facilities. Capital requests. We would have recreation request for the park tree removal and pruning of $20,000. We would also recommend the foot park, foot park playground renovation of $60,000 for a total of $95,000. Somebody want to move that?
Joe, you missed the foot park tennis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Put a circle on it. Foot park tennis is included there as, with $15,000. Thanks, Jeff. So, that total is $95,000.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion. All in favor? Next is infrastructure capital items. Water treatment plant, $50,000. Coming out of other, coming out of their funds. Manhole repair, $50,000. Parks and open space repairs of $40,300 have come out of other means, other financing. Local traffic study for projects, the request was for $25,000. We would recommend $10,000. Again, a general fund, cap, a general fund for that. Road improvement and resurfacing, request was $450,000. We would fund that amount. Sidewalk replacement, $65,000. And seawall repair of $35,000. So, the request was for $715,300. Recommended funding of $700,300.
I'll move it, Joe.
Did somebody move that?
I did, Joe.
Joe, somebody seconded it?
Seconded.
Seconded, thanks, Harry. You had a question, Victor?
Yeah, it's total. It's just.
That you don't, you don't like the total?
My total disagrees.
You got an issue with that deadline item there, Jim? What was the question? The $700,300, Victor's questioning it.
But the new total is what, Joe?
$700,300.
Yeah. The $15,000 is out from the traffic.
Okay, my sheet has something else. Okay, that's fine.
Are you looking at tonight's sheet?
Apparently not.
Okay, that's right. Okay. I've done that before, so. Motion's been made and seconded. We had some discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so just for clarity here, the total of municipal capital items is, that we would recommend is $2,568,157. Why don't we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved, motion for that and seconded by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's all of the budgets that we have to review and vote on at this point. If in fact, based on that, find my notes here. With the changes that we've recommended and the changes to the capital items as well as the operating side, the requested expenditures of $121,552,768 has been reduced by $779,453, which would leave revised expenditures of $120,773,315. Non-tax revenue of $17,559,000. But what I'd like to point out is that we're, I don't think I have that detail in front of me, Jim.
You want me to address that?
Sure.
Thank you. So, the non-tax revenue is essentially the use of fund balance. And you may recall in the current year, we started out the year with a fund balance use of $6,917.36. That was primarily driven by the 95% collection rate. The amended use of fund balance is $225,000 higher than that. That reflects the Worf project. So, this is sort of resetting that. So, if you subtract the $6,917.36, then you go back to what you used as fund balance last March. You're using $3,727.36. That's about an $895,000 increase from what we typically appropriate. And the reason that the board did that was they wanted to be cognizant of the COVID crisis and using more of the town's surplus than they normally would. And then there's another $112,000 on top of that. And that is really to address two areas of the budget that had large increases. So, Blackstone Library was about $154,000. And in round numbers, East Shore Health District was $70,000. And so, by sort of splitting that, $112,000 splits those increases. In effect, what you're saying is that we're only taxing for half of that. So, that is a way of phasing those items in, but you're phasing it in on the revenue side as opposed to the expenditure side. And I think on that, there was a recognition that while the health district was not an easy pill to swallow, and I'm not making a pun there, but that in fact, we are in a district with two other towns and we sort of all have to row our oars at the same time. So, for example, if we were to approve something less than that, that would set up a series of events with the other towns. Our discussions with the other communities are that they are funding the increase, although, you know, it's not ideal for them, but they are in fact doing that. With the library, we spent months before this board talking about what our goals were as it related to the library. I think those goals were echoed with the approval of the sinking fund and using dollars for capital as opposed to offsetting an operating increase. The other goal there was to moderate the use of endowment funds. And I think there was a recognition on behalf of the board that this was in fact a reset year. And so, this actually is how you're addressing that. The other change of note, one might ask is, well, if we're not using the $6,917.36 with the 95% collection rate, that relates to using 98.1% as a collection rate. In fiscal 2020, the collection rate was 98.14. So, there is a little bit of a margin there, not much. But what we're hoping is that, you know, we could at least meet our budget collection rate. We don't know the impact of the stimulus spending. Like many of these projections, you could find folks in various camps on this. I did share with you an article from Standard and Poor's who basically said that the stimulus is being viewed as positive in all sectors. The reason why I think Standard and Poor's is a significant source of information is because unlike other sources of information, we actually appear before Standard and Poor's either through our rating or through their surveillance throughout the year. So, essentially, when you shake all of that out, that relates to a reduction in non-tax revenues, but your allowance for uncollected taxes is also going down and your use of fund balance is also going down. So, a lot of little moving parts there, but, you know, it all works to get you closer to what your budgetary objectives were, as I understood them.
Thanks, Jim. And so, as Jim provided the overview of the non-tax revenues of $17,559,277 and allocating the fund balance of $3,078, that would have the total tax requirements of $106,292,000. That would, at the 98%, 98.1% collection rate on the $3.693 billion, would fund the budget. So, the mil rate that would be recommended is 29.52, which is an increase of six tenths of one mil. It is an increase. We believe that it's, that would be acceptable to the citizens as well as the RTM. And this estimate at this point in time, for the average household, not for, maybe not the average household, but for an assessment of approximately $250,000, it would equate to about a $150 increase in taxes. So, it's not, it is an increase, but we feel that it's important to fund the projects that we've, and the operating budget that we've described. At this point, I think we'll recess and wait for the various resolutions that are required for us to recommend this budget to the RTM. Thank you. Okay, we're going to review and discuss and vote on final resolutions. So, the result of our deliberations and most recent votes of recommending a budget of As I recap a few minutes ago, that'd be a raise in taxation of $106,292,38, resulting in a mil rate of 29.52 at a collection rate of 98.1. So, with that, I will read the resolutions. First one is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM appropriation of $60,303,541 to the Board of Ed. Board of Education operating in capital for fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Seconded.
Seconded. I'll read that resolution over again because I didn't have my mic. Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $60,303,541 to the Board of Education operating in capital account for the fiscal 2122.
I'll move that resolution.
Moved by Victor.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $60,469,774 for all other town departments for the fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Ed, I'm sorry, resolved that the Board of Finance hereby passed the following budget for the fiscal year 202122. Board of Education operating, $60,5541. Board of Ed special ed, zero. Board of Education capital and leases, $298,000 for a subtotal. Board of Ed, $60,303,541. Town departments, $60,469,774 for a total of $120,773,315.
I'll move it, Joe.
Moved by Jeff.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $61,646 to the open space fund budget for 2122.
I'll move that.
Moved by Victor.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $14,926 to the sewer assessment fund budget for fiscal 2122. Moved by Charlie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Harry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $76,600 to the Board of Ed Shoreline Adult Education Enrichment Fund budget for the fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $485,766 to the Board of Ed School Age Child Care Fund budget for the fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie. Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $4,574,73 to the wastewater treatment plant budget for the fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $388,547, the Animal Control Fund budget for fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob. Seconded by Victor. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $1,691,0214 to the Human Services Special Revenue Fund budget for fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM an appropriation of $369,000 to the lease fund budget for fiscal 2122.
I'll move it.
Moved by Charlie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM that with the exception of the first selectman who is elected to take a 0% increase, salaries for the following elected officials increase by 2% for each of their two-year term of office. Second selectman, third selectman, treasurer, board of assessment, appeals, RTM moderator and finance clerk.
I'll move it.
Moved by Bob.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next is resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM that salaries for the following elected officials increase by 2% for each of their two-year term of office, town clerk and tax collector.
I'll move it.
Moved by Harry, thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our required resolutions and recommendations to the RTM. I would like to thank the
I just think, Ray, you have that there? Yeah, if you can just amend the first resolution with the elected officials, I think it's the RTM moderator and RTM clerk, right? RTM clerk.
So, we left the RTM clerk off?
Yes.
And is there any substitute, anything comes off?
No, no, I think it's just for that resolution. There's no, I think it was accounted for, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all, it's accounted for in the book. It's just for your resolution here.
Okay, so the, so we have a resolution. So, this resolution that I will read will be substituted, will substitute for the prior resolution. So, the resolved that the Board of Finance recommends to the RTM, with the exception of the first selectman who is elected to take 0% increase, salaries for the following elected officials increase by 2% for each of their two-year term. And that includes second selectman, third selectman, treasurer, board of assessment appeals, RTM moderator, RTM clerk and finance clerk. So, we added RTM clerk. Would somebody like to move that? Moved by Robert.
Seconded.
Seconded by Victor. Discussion? All in favor? Okay, I think we're done on resolutions. So, I would just like to thank the board and all of the department heads, in particular the Finance Department, Mr. Finch, Jim Finch and Catherine, and for their good help on this. Also Lisa for the good work as clerk and the good support and guidance from first selectman Jamie Cosgrove. Thank you all for participating. This was a tough year. It's a little cumbersome with the type of media. And also, just so that everybody knows, we did, we do spend a lot of time on the budget. We have seen these budgets year after year. So, sometimes we may not spend as much time on them, but we look at each budget and know it well. We also felt that in fact, while this is a year for modest tax increases, we feel that the expenditures and capital items and operating expenses were appropriate and keep the town in the good fashion that it is. With that, if there's any comments by other board members, I welcome them at this point. Thank you with none. Jamie, you have any words of wisdom for us?
Sure, Joe. Thank you and thank you to the board for your deliberations and recommendations. As you mentioned, Joe, this has been a challenging year throughout the year. We've, you know, heard in these meetings as others and just whoever you talk to, Ray, it's unprecedented times, challenging times, extraordinary times. And, you know, when drafting this budget, certainly we recognize what we face, but I think we've met the challenges as we have in the past when developing a budget. We hold a strategy that has served this town well. We look to maintain a high level of service. We fund our future liabilities and all while being sensitive to the taxpayers. So, I thank everybody involved in, the department heads, the Finance Department, you know, Jim and Catherine, the tremendous work that they do throughout the year and really overseeing the finances and the Board of Finance. So, thank you and I look forward to continuing that strategy as we go through the RTM process.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, with no other work to come before the board, Alex entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.